Give me the cue. Good morning, we are going to convene the May 19th Scott County Board of Commissioners meeting. Join me in the pledge.
The citizens of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you so much. Once again, we are meeting in person. We have Commissioner Ulrich on Skype, which is awesome, and we are practicing our social distancing. And I see a lot of mask-wearing out there, I'm waving out there, they're waving back. We have ours, we're being good examples. So with that, let's go to number two. Are there any amendments to the agenda? I don't see any. So we'll move on to approve the minutes of the May 5th 2020 County Board meeting. Are there any changes, additions, deletions?
Mr. Chair, I'll move approval of those minutes.
I'll second that, Mr. Chairman.
Motion and second, any discussion? Otherwise, I will look to Deb for a roll call vote, please.
Commissioner Wreckman-Brecke.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Allrick.
Aye.
There we go, thank you very much. Now, we're going to move on to recognition of interested citizens. I'm looking back to my left. This is a great opportunity for folks to come and address the board for whatever happens to be on their mind, and I'm just digging for my timer, but I have a feeling I'm not going to need it, but just in case. It's a great opportunity, so good morning.
Good morning, can I get the...
Can I have an overhead?
Can I zoom in?
And maybe just give us, I don't know if we need your name again for the record, but...
Yeah.
Okay, sure.
Can I get over that?
Yep, you bet.
Oh, that's perfect. Can you guys all see that now?
Yes.
Okay, good morning, my name's John Meiser. And so I'm here today just to figure out why you guys are ignoring me. Why I'm being ignored. I have, you know, basically saying non-responsive public servants to criminal acts committed by public servants on a member of the public. And I'm being ignored. I come over here, I make requests, and I'm being ignored. I'm being ignored. You just give me my five minutes and then push me out the door, and I'm being ignored. I've made two specific requests. I've asked for a copy of the county's liability policy. I made that directly to Tom. Tom handed it over to Ron. I sent Dave an email, I got no response. Not even a response to my email. Not that I got it, I didn't get it, or whatever, just no response. I've also asked for, and I made a FOIA request, I thought, okay, maybe they want me to make a FOIA request, okay, I'll do it FOIA. No response. Ignored. My public servants who took an oath to say, "I'm going to serve the public." And no response from the public servants who said they're going to serve the public. I made a second request, I want a copy of the notice that Jolene Anon, child support officer, that she sent to Commissioner John Harrington to suspend the license of the person, John Meiser, according to Minnesota statutes 171, 186, and 518A, 65B. I've asked for a copy of that. Because in order, the legislature, I've made two requests, and again, I've been ignored. Ignored. Is that what you do to the public, ignore them? I'm just fine young, because I'm going to finish her in five minutes, you're going to go, "Okay, let's go to agenda number five." You've ignored me again. And I've honored your five minutes every time, and I've asked for your help. Why? Why are you ignoring me? Is there a reason? Have I done something wrong? Have I offended you? Have I not been polite? I've just asked, would you help? Let me tell you something real quick. To suspend a driver's license, there's two conditions. Two conditions that the Minnesota Legislature put in place. And if you don't have those two conditions, then Jolene Anon cannot suspend a driver's license. I didn't make the rules, Minnesota Legislature did. I didn't make the rules. I just read them and said, "Do you have the two conditions in order to go through and send a notice?" According to what the Minnesota Legislature said, you need two conditions. It's impossible to have two conditions, because one of the conditions doesn't even exist. So one of the conditions doesn't even exist. Yet, a notice was sent by Jolene Anon, a Scott County employee, and I've been damaged. I was sentenced to jail for 75 days for a traffic ticket. Nobody in the state of Minnesota has ever gone to jail for 75 days, let alone days, for driving after suspension. It just doesn't happen, it's unheard of. While I was in jail, I met people going like, "You're in here for what?" I've had a dozen of those. I've never gone to jail. "Oh, I got one of those, I paid $100 fine." Not me, 75 days in jail. 75 days in jail I was sentenced to, first time, traffic ticket. And she didn't even have the authority to suspend it. I've been damaged, I've been damaged and harmed, and I can't get the liability policy, and I can't get the notice. How do I go through and seek a remedy when you won't give me the basic documents? I need the liability policy, so I can read it, so I can actually do through and do my work and file a claim legitimately. But you're ignoring me for months, for months. So I've made two specific requests. Two specific requests, Dave. Can I get the liability policy? Can I get the notice? Because if Jolene Anon does not have the notice, I want to see whatever she sent to Commissioner Harrington. Because whatever it is, it isn't according to Minnesota Legislature. It's not according to these two statutes that I've quoted, not at all. But there's some language in there that could kind of lead you to think, well, maybe, but on a careful reading, it doesn't fly. It doesn't fly, I've been damaged. I'd like to go to a jury and have the jury read it and not have to worry. So, I'd like to know when I can get these two documents. How long do I have to wait? I've come here and I talked for five minutes. Can I get something in five minutes? Can I get something in a day? I've been waiting months. Now, in fairness, as I walked up here, Ron looked at me, he goes, "Oh, I forgot about your request for the liability policy that Tom told me about." I don't know if you did too, Dave. But he goes, "Resend it to me." So I will. So, in full disclosure, two minutes ago, Ron asked me for that. But I'm also asking for a copy of the notice of what Jolene Anon sent, because I know it's not according to Minnesota Legislature, because the second condition doesn't exist, and Dave's saying I got one minute.
Well, I've let you go over.
Oh, okay. So, I'm just asking, will you give me the documents?
So we're going to take a 30-second little question here, and I'm just going to look briefly, we're not going to delve into this greatly here, because we've got an agenda before us, but can we get those two things?
I will have him the liability policy. I will look into what Jolene Anon did, I can't say specifically, I don't see in her file what she did, so I'll look into it, and if she has what you're requesting, I'll give it to you.
Something happened to Commissioner Harrington doing an act that he got from Jolene Anon. So whatever she sent, that's what I'd like. Because he wouldn't have done anything unless he got something from Jolene. It's really that simple. He wouldn't have just willy-nilly go, "Hm, John Meiser, let's go suspend his license." He got something from Jolene Anon. Whatever that something is, that's what I'd like. Okay? Thank you. Thanks for giving me an extra minute, sorry to go over.
Thank you for your passion. Anyone else would like to address the board for this portion of the meeting? I'm not seeing anyone. Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, with great trepidation, I'm going to wade in here for just a moment, because I think our custom and usage is, we don't respond or get into debates with citizens who approach the board to make us aware of things. We usually let staff handle requests, simple requests like this. So, I will never respond to Mr. Meiser while he's standing there, because I believe our custom and usage is that it triggers a response, and then the five minutes starts all over again. He and I have a long history, it goes back at least 15 years. And every time he comes here, it's a new issue. This time, it's one that I'm concerned about. How does somebody get 75 days for a traffic citation? Well, I have a hunch there's a lot more to the story than what we're being presented, but as soon as I ask him about that, now we get into an hour-long debate, and he'll pull out all kinds of stuff, and it exceeds the purpose of Agenda Item Number Four, recognition of interested citizens. Because this is an ongoing battle, and it's like every six weeks, there's a new issue. If I was to engage him, I would engage the real person, the fake person, what are we dealing with here? And I would go back to his restaurant experience, when he and I were members of the Chamber of Commerce in Prior Lake. And it would be ugly. And I refuse to do that. But the public probably sits here every month and thinks, "Why are they treating this guy like this?" Know that there's a long history here, and it's not pretty. And if I was to engage with Mr. Meiser, we would probably end up getting into a shouting match, and there would be a lot of loss of decorum and respect and civility, because this runs deep, and this touches people that I love and admire, and he's not one of them. That's why I sit here mute, while he's up here accusing us of all kinds of stuff. I probably said too much, but I just want you to know, and I want the public to know, that we don't blow people off like this. But this is a deeper issue that has tentacles that run all over the county and touch people that I've worked with and cared about since before I was in the Legislature. That's the end of my comments.
And I would just say, thank you for those comments, and I knew I was taking a little bit of a discretionary risk there. And we don't have HD cameras, but if you did, you'd maybe see the temperature, not because of a fever, but because of blood pressure.
Blood pressure and temperature up, but not because of the lungs.
Right. Look down to my right.
Mr. Chair, I'd just also like to echo what Commissioner Beard just said. My office, and me personally, far before I was even the elected Scott County Attorney, when I was just a line attorney, before I was even chief deputy, has a long history with Mr. Meiser, where many conversations were over the phone, where it would end up one of us hanging up on each other after a shouting match. And what the public does not see when Mr. Meiser is here before the County Board is the amount of man-hours and time and resources that my office has put into Mr. Meiser over the years. It's breathtaking, really. Not that he should be ignored, I'm not saying that at all. And I will get him the documentation that he's looking for. But I just want to echo what Commissioner Beard said, that what the public sees during these hearings, during these meetings, is a small tip of the iceberg of what this county and the resources and the man-hours have put into Mr. Meiser over the years. And like Commissioner Beard also said, I've been given many opportunities by Mr. Meiser in this public forum to take debate and engage him in debate, when he's sitting in public, standing there in public at the podium, calling me a liar, and various other things that myself personally or my office has done. And like Commissioner Beard has said, I don't take debate, and I just let him say his piece and move on.
Well said by the left and right, yes, yes.
You said, the attorney said, "resources," and it's taxpayer dollars, what it is, and a lot of them, you know, so, and I know that. A couple of things he also said up there, I'm just not getting into, but he said FOIA, and that's Freedom of Information Act for people that don't know that. And then he had the DAS, which is driving after suspension, was on the screen there, so. But this is, in the end, more of a court issue than anything else. This isn't county commissioners. Correct?
Exactly, I've said that to the board at meetings in the past, that what he complains about is not an issue for the County Board. It's an issue with my office and an issue with the judiciary. If he didn't like what he was convicted of, he should have appealed to the Court of Appeals. And I think I've emailed the County Board in the past my outline of why I believe he was sentenced to how he was sentenced by the court. It wasn't even a sentence that my office recommended, it was a sentence that the judge handed down. So, his issue is with the court. His issue is, it doesn't like a decision of the court, his issue is to take it up on appeal. The County Board really has no power even to do anything about it. You have the ability to listen to him, but that's it.
Yeah, I have to say, I would love, I think, I think, I would love a lot more authority sitting in these chairs, but we really don't, we have limited authority, I know, it's one of those, like, be careful what you ask for. But we have limited authority, and we all are in the different positions and different layers of government. So, good comments. I still love this portion of the meeting, because anyone can come in and say anything, and we will listen. That's the important part, that I've seen this county administer a lot of grace in different areas, and that's something that I'm proud of. And so, but again, anyone is welcome, this is a great forum to come and talk to us about whatever, and we will listen. So, anyway, with that being said, thank you for your comments, everybody. We're going to move on to number five, the consent agenda. I'm going to read through these, these are items that have been vetted by staff, and will pass in one motion. 5.1, we're going to approve the request for conditional use permit amendment to combine facilities, Demcon Companies LLC applicant and property owner in Section 21 of Louisville Township. 5.2, approve the request to rezone 39.04 acres from Urban Expansion Reserve District to Urban Expansion Reserve Cluster District, Paul Family Trust applicant and property owner in Section 16 of Sand Creek Township. 5.3, approve payroll processing of personnel actions. 5.4, approve receipt of COVID-19 response funding through the local public health grant in the amount of $158,636. 5.5, approve grant agreement amendment number one and receive supplemental funding from the Minnesota Department of Health for the 2020-2021 Public Health Emergency Preparedness and Cities Readiness Initiative Grants Budget Period II. That's a lot of, what's the acronym there? 5.6, adopt resolution number 2020-088, authorizing final payment to C.S. McCrossan Construction, Inc., for County Project 83-22 on County Highway 83 and 4th Ave in the city of Shakopee in the amount of $14,630.85. 5.7, adopt resolution number 2020-089, authorizing final payment to Granite Ledge Electrical Contractors, Inc., for the flashing yellow arrow modifications project in the amount of $1,000. 5.8, adopt resolution number 2020-091, recommending a proactive highway safety improvement transportation program project and local partnership program project be submitted to the Minnesota Department of Transportation for consideration for funding in the 2020 project solicitations. 5.9, adopt resolution number 2020-092, authorizing a second amendment to the Design Consultant Service Agreement with Kimley Horn and Associates, Inc., for the County Highway 83 Reconstruction Project in the city of Shakopee. 5.10, approve a record of dispersments and approve claims. Those are the 10 items on consent. Are there any items that anyone would like polled for further discussion?
Mr. Chairman, they all look good to me, and I'll move the consent agenda as presented.
We have a motion?
Second.
We have a motion and a second for the consent agenda as presented, any discussion? Otherwise, I will look to Deb for a roll call, please.
Commissioner Wreckman-Brecke.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
Commissioner Allrick.
Aye.
Consent agenda is approved. Now, we're going to move on to item 6.1, recognition of Scott County retiree Linda, how do you say that, I don't know how to say that last name. There you go. Thank you, I didn't want to butcher that. Looking out to the gallery, she's making her way.
That Fred's daughter-in-law?
And we are still social distancing, we have people with masks on, not being robbed.
Mr. Chairman, while they're gathering, may I ask if there's going to be treats to celebrate this? Is that also a victim of the whole pandemic?
Oh, boy.
We haven't had strudel cake for a long time.
Oh, man. I feel sorry for Linda, I apologize, we're not having something.
And she's in the hot seat, like, right in the center, under the light, front and center. This is your life.
This is such a good, happy thing to be celebrating amongst all of this, and the dedication of one of our staff. So, Linda, you have to come up, I don't know how we social distance here, but you're in the camera spot here. So Linda has been with Scott County since October 10th, 1994. This is more than 25 years of dedicated service. She was hired as an administrative specialist supporting income maintenance, employment and training, and eventually child support. In September of 2002, Linda was promoted to Child Support Case Aid, which is where she has been every day since then. Linda's coworkers and friends have a deep respect for her work ethic and abilities. She will be difficult to replace, because she is one of those people who knows her job inside and out. So many things are part of her nature and just can't be written down. There's a depth of knowledge that's walking out the door, which has been very difficult to document. Boy, do I ever know those folks, when you just know everything, because you've done it for so long. Linda knows the operations of many areas of the county, more than just child support, which has been an asset that cannot be replicated. She has the uncanny ability to anticipate what needs to be done and completes it before an issue arises. She will stop whatever she's doing to assist a coworker. That's step-up attitude. Well, everything but e-filing. Story there?
Not that I know of.
One of her primary duties is sending out paperwork for personal service. There have been many times the process servers call her because they've had difficulty finding the individual. She digs into her bag of tricks and often finds new information to pass on, which allows the process servers to get their job done. She finds little spelling errors or small mistakes and reports and catches them before that paperwork goes out. This makes us all look better and saves us time and money. There have been many times over the years that Linda's clients have reached out to her supervisor, complimenting her on her patience, her responsiveness, and compassion that she has shown them. Her coworkers had a hard time putting into words just what she means to them, but here are some things they were able to come up with. "Trustworthy, dedicated, knowledgeable, compassionate, loyal, and willing to go that extra mile." A direct quote, "She makes me look good." Unquote. "Linda, you will be deeply missed, and know you are going to miss us too, even Kevin's singing." Enjoy your new chapter, your great-grandson is going to be very lucky to have more time with you. So, with that, I'm not going to touch the plaque, but there is a plaque here for you that recognizes your service to Scott County Government, it's from 1994. And with that, the podium is yours, if you'd like to say a couple of words.
No, I'm fine.
All right, then I'm going to open it up to her coworkers to come up and say a few words.
Thank you, Mr. Chair and Commissioners, I am Carrie Wemet, the Economic Assistance Director, and it is my pleasure to stand before you today to recognize Linda as she retires from Scott County on behalf of our Economic Assistance Department. Linda, when I asked what they appreciate about you the most, your team said, "She always takes time to help, she's patient and will drop what she is doing to assist. Her exceptional customer service, she responds with kindness and empathy, she is dependable. Her vast knowledge, she makes me a better worker." When I asked what they will miss the most, your team said, "Her ability to figure out anything, our partnership, her get-it-done attitude, her day-to-day guidance, her work ethic, and her friendship." And when I asked what they wish for you, your team said, "A relaxing retirement that is peaceful and fun, many lucky trips to the casino, and lots of loving quality time with your sweet great-grandson." One of your coworkers summed it up well when she said, "It's hard to give you a few words about someone who has given Scott County her all." And I have to tell you, Linda, if I had read every word that I received, we would be here until next Tuesday. So please know that your work is not going to notice. You have brought tremendous value to the child support team, our department, and our residents, and your coworkers and friends here sure care about you a lot. Yes, you're welcome.
Thank you. Anyone else?
Carrie set it for us.
So you have to come up, I don't know how we're going to do this, but we always get a picture with the board.
Well, and I'm going to say something. Well, there's, in the writing of old, it says, "Let another praise you not from your own lips." And what you read, Leslie, and Carrie, I mean, for other people to see those character qualities in you, that is a high, high honor, which transcends any little coffee cake that we may have had in the past, because we can't have that kind of a gathering now. So, that speaks highly of who you are as a person, and that will be missed around here. So, thank you for who you are and what you did for this county.
Why don't you stand up like Fisher, Allrick, and I don't know how they move in here, but...
Oh, do we need masks, are we going to be on?
Are we going to? How do you want us?
I think you should stand up behind us.
I'm going to get some bigger ones.
I feel like this should be like a posse shot, you know, for kind of like staggering.
Do we want to stand behind her?
Yeah.
Maybe we could just Photoshop ourselves then, for sure.
With the mask, it's going to be just epic.
That's one word for it.
I feel like I'm Robin Hood.
I know.
We don't have any money.
Well, you do.
Thank you.
Thank you, Linda.
I'm still kind of wondering how they got you to do all the speaking for them, and these guys kind of get the...
We should add a John on a stick.
Yes, we have to do that. Oh, that is hilarious, I like that.
Could we get Commissioner Allrick on a stick for future photo opportunities, on the phone, so he can be included? That would be great, thank you.
That's funny.
Commissioner on a stick.
All right, we're going to move on to 6.2, I see Tony entering the room, we're going to look at adopting resolution number 2020-090, proclaiming May 17th to the 23rd, 2020 as National Public Works Week in Scott County. And here he is.
Good morning, fantastic. Good morning, Mr. Chair, members of the board. Yes, I am indeed here. Purpose of this agenda is to adopt that resolution, proclaiming this as Public Works Week. So I've got a few things I'm going to read through here. National Public Works Week is a celebration of the tens of thousands of men and women across the United States who provide and maintain the infrastructure and services collectively known as public works. This is the 60th anniversary, sponsored by the American Public Works Association, calling attention to the importance of public works in community life. This week seeks to recognize the often unsung heroes of our society, the professionals who serve the public every day with quiet dedication and delivery of what truly matters in our lives. National Public Works Week is an observation each year during the third full week in May. Through National Public Works Week and other efforts, the American Public Works Association seeks to raise the public's awareness of public works issues and to increase confidence in the public works employees who are dedicated to improve the quality of life for present and future generations. This year's theme is "The Rhythm of Public Works." And this year's theme challenges our members and their citizens to think about their communities as a symphony of essential services working in concert to create a great place to live. I know we surely have that here in Scott County. Every community has a rhythm, a heartbeat, that reflects the essence and tempo of life. Public works keeps a community's rhythm moving by providing an orchestra of infrastructure services to transportation, water, wastewater, stormwater treatment, public buildings, spaces, parks, and grounds, emergency management and first response, solid waste and right-of-way management. That's a ton of our everyday lives, when you think about it, it really is. Public works provides the harmony needed for collaboration with all the stakeholders in capital projects, infrastructure solutions, and quality of life services. In addition to the ongoing studies, planning, preliminary and final design activities for multimodal infrastructure that is the vitality and backbone of our transportation system, the following projects and activities were initiated or completed in this past year. So I'll name some of these here. Construction started on the Chunk Highway 21 and 13 in downtown Prior Lake, that'll be finishing up this year. Construction of the 16941 interchange project that will be completed this year, including the 14 Overpass, completed last year. 11 turn lane and bypass lanes constructed along County Highway 8. Eleven turn lane and bypass lanes constructed along County Highway 8 and County Highway 27. Construction of the 42 and Trunk Hobby 13 was completed. Nearly 450,000 linear feet of crack sealing to make our, to keep our pavements whole.
Mister Chairman, just a second.
Yeah.
Don't they use toilet paper to seal those cracks? And is that what really happened? I'm sorry, Mister Chairman.
You better cut back.
Little paper in the cracks, yeah. Toilet paper on the street. I'm sorry, Tony. I couldn't help myself.
I like the levity. Resurfaced 17 and 1/2 centerline miles of roadway. Seal-coated 43 centerline miles of roadway. Over 1,700 signs were replaced to improve the retroreflectivity along our roadways. Pavement markings were refreshed. Over 4 million linear lines of long lines were put down and nearly 43,000 square feet of symbols. 14,500 linear feet of ditches were cleaned. That's always an important activity as well. Center, 29 centerline culverts, those are the culverts under our roadways, not the ones under the driveways, were replaced, and we do that in advance of our overlay project to get out ahead, let things settle down before we come back the next year with our overlay project. Snow and ice control on over 300 centerline miles. I'll get into the adopt-a-highway in just a moment here, right after this. Over 10,000 people utilized the regional training facility this year. Over 280,000 rounds were fired at the regional training facility by agencies within Scott County and those outside of Scott County as well. Construction started on the central shop warming building. That's actually completed now, that moved in in March. And the government centers, everybody knows as well. Roof replacement at the Marshall Transit Station, Extension, and Central Shop. Replacement of radiant heaters at the central shop and re-roofing of garages at the regional transportation facility. So ton of really great projects that have gone on in this last year. And with that, public works staff asked that Scott County Board of Commissioners proclaim the week of May 17th to the 23rd, year 2020, as National Public Works Week in Scott County. Thank you.
Thank you very much. I hear Public Works Week, and I look at Leslie, and you know exactly what I'm thinking of with the Public Works Week, what we used to be able to do out at Central Shop, make little, whatever they're called.
Devil's gear.
Yeah. Bless you. Bless you. I don't know if that came up on the microphone, but bless you. So we're being asked to adopt a resolution for National Public Works Week.
Mister Chair, I will make that motion.
We have a motion.
And I will second it.
And we have a second. Is there any discussion?
Sorry about the toilet paper crack.
Well, no, I mean, I thought about it when it was going on. I'm like, wow, that is some, you might see some people out there, but anyway, no, it's good. Keep it, keep it light. All right, looking to Deb for a roll call vote to adopt this resolution. Tony's just trying to keep that, got his Oscar speech ready to go.
Commissioner Weckman-Brecky?
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf?
Aye.
Commissioner Beard?
Aye.
Commissioner Beer?
Aye.
Commissioner Ulrich?
Awesome. Thank you very much. Now we're going to move on to 7.1. We're going to receive information and recognize as Scott County Adopt-a-Highway volunteers as part of the May 17th through 23rd, 2020 National Public Works Week. And Tony is here again. Take it away.
All right, thank you. I love being up here every year to do this. I've done it for quite a few years now, and it's important this time of the year when we're recognizing all the great deeds that are done during Public Works Week. And we have an incredible volunteer group in Scott County that really helps out our highway department and helps clean our roadways through our Adopt-a-Highway program. And so I want to recognize them today, so I'm going to read a few things here as well. The Scott County Board of Commissioners wishes to recognize the personal contributions of its citizens and business volunteers. The Adopt-a-Highway volunteers generally generously and readily step forward to help keep our highways clear of trash and debris. Through the work of these volunteers, the quality of life has improved for all of Scott County citizens. This program and opportunity enables residents and businesses who are environmentally conscious to make a personal contribution to the cleaner environment and engage in helping local county government. Scott County Adopt-a-Highway program started in 1992. So this is our 29th year, and we've had a tremendous volunteer effort of citizens and businesses who have helped keep our roadways clear and our highway ditches clean. It is important that we recognize these volunteers. We have over 144 groups that clean nearly 300 miles of our roadway right now. And so awesome effort. Anybody that's listening in, watching in, if they want to be part of that, please reach out to our highway department because segments of roadway open up now and again. Generally, it's a two-mile segment of roadway. We've had some very longstanding people that have maintained their section of roadway for decades, literally. And so that's a fantastic thing, but sometimes opportunities open up. And if you want to know where those segments are at, please reach out to us. So very, very important. So in your packet lists all the different groups in there that are currently helping us out in our highways. And all of them have a sign. You've seen the signs out there at the beginning, each direction of the road section that they're maintaining. And they really haven't missed a beat this year at all with everything going on. So it's really been a tremendous effort. And if you look in that packet, it's quite a variety. You've got individuals, you've got families, you've got neighborhoods, you've got families in honor of somebody, you've got several schools, you've got businesses. There's senior living facilities in there, there's churches, there's church groups, there's Lions Clubs and Rotary Clubs, there's Boy Scouts and Girl Scout Troops, there's 4H Clubs, there's banks, there's realtors, there's dental offices, there's construction companies, there's lots of hunting and snowmobile clubs, and lots of sports teams in there as well. So an incredible effort and quite a wide range of support that we have in Scott County, and it's fantastic every single year to see, so.
Totally agree. I mean, that is a huge effort and potentially even a little bit more Herculean this year. I'm just thinking, one of my first meetings coming to this board, I think you were honored with, it was a little chicken, like the craziest thing that came to the household hazardous waste. I'm just wondering if for the ditch cleaning, there's the craziest, oddest thing found in the ditch award. It's just something to think about. I don't know. Make sure you got really thick gloves, probably.
Mister Chair, Tony, about how many pounds or tons do you think are picked up?
We don't track it. We must know about that, but it gets kind of hard to do.
I'm sure.
I think they might be able to tell by bags.
Yeah.
I don't think it weighs pounds.
Well, to answer your, there's a lot of stuff that's in that ditch that you wouldn't want to show your kids. I'll tell you, there's some goofy stuff that comes out, so anyhow, yeah.
But we do, when you travel around, whether it's our state or somewhere else, and you see some of the stuff that's on the roadside, and then you see the lack thereof within Scott County, it is really a tremendous effort that our volunteers do every single year. And we have several groups within Scott County here as well that have a section of roadway, so. Yeah, it's a great effort.
It's awesome. It's totally awesome. Yeah, thank you, volunteers, for doing all of that work, no doubt. All right, Tony, anything else for Tony?
No, thank you very much.
All right. Thank you very much. All right, we're going to move on to item number eight, committee reports and commissioner updates. I'm going to look down to my right. Commissioner Weckman-Brecky.
Thank you, Mister Chair. Since our last meeting on May 5th, I attended the Blakely Township meeting. Really was just an update, update to them about county activities. Talked about the property tax penalty, action we took at the last meeting, that type of thing. On May 8th, we had our first Zoom scale meeting. That went well. A lot of attendees. It was good to see that so many people were able to participate in that way. On May 12th, I had my monthly meeting with the county administrator. On May 15th, I attended the Dakota-Scott Workforce Development Board meeting. Again, that was probably our second monthly meeting by Zoom. It seems to be the way, way of doing it now. I talked a lot about, heard from different board members who are large employers in the two counties, big educational facilities, what has changed for them, how they're gearing to open back up. Heard from people who are still hiring. I think that's important for us to realize and promote that we have businesses in Scott County trying to hire people. And that's important that we, we provide, you know, or we promote that awareness and sometimes make those connections where possible. And then this morning before our board meeting, I had a brief, my monthly meeting with the Human Services Director about a couple of items. And between those things, I guess I didn't keep track of the AMC and NACO and White House updates, participated in as many of those as I could. And then wanted to give the board an update on Pro Act and what's happening there. I corresponded with Steve Ditchler yesterday. Of course, our, our new options has been closed and remains closed until they can get some DH waivers to get folks in there. They won't be able to open up. When they do open up, they'll have a limited capacity to try and keep everybody safe, but that, that probably is going to work fine because many of the attendees or people who attend those programs maybe won't be attending because of their physical or medical conditions and they're staying home. But he said we do have 20 to 25 Scott County participants who are really ready to get back. They've been trying to engage them with some online programs, but that's difficult. So they're hoping May 26th, if the DH waivers are in place, but more likely it's looking in the beginning of June to get folks back at, at the Pro Act new options site, at least on a limited basis. So just wanted to give the board an update there.
That's good.
Mister Chairman, Mister Brecky, the Pro Act thing surprises me. I remember when we were discussing the whole new options and what we needed to do or what, what could be done there. One of the things that I was personally aware of was the disruption to schedules of some of those folks is really a big trauma, very difficult to deal with. Are they being, are they okay? I haven't heard from any of my friends that are in that, participating that way.
Staff are reaching out, and this isn't unique to Pro Act. All of these types of programs and facilities across the state, most across the nation have ceased operations during the timeframe. And many of the folks participating, some of them who had off-site jobs maybe are still doing those jobs in some cases, in some cases not. So it's, that's been heavy on, from what I've heard of from staff, to try and keep those connections, to work with those parents, just like parents or guardians who are trying to work from home with toddlers and elementary school children they're teaching. Now there's family members working at home where now there are other family members who usually are attending and participating in Pro Act are home. And so that's, that's another burden and result of the current environment that maybe we, we forget about. And, and it's just similar in some cases. And this probably applies a little bit to why it'll be a reduced attendance in the beginning. And I'll just give a personal example, like my brother in the group home where he lives, he hasn't been allowed to leave. We cannot visit him. So he's not allowed to go and do his day program because that's the system put in place by his agency. Yeah, he's, he's pretty tough, but to protect him, but to protect his housemates even more. So it's, it's a hard system. It's hard to navigate right now when, when you have a family member who has special needs, who's used to participating in either work-type environment or, or social-type environment. So I think it's positive, happy. We, we look forward to getting Pro Act open. And of course, it'll be individuals and their family's decisions, whether they get back there. But from my understanding and the ones I know, if they're able to, they're going to want to get, get back to work, as they would say.
You know, when that news came, you know, with the closing, I mean, that whole deal is not far from any of us. I know that. And it's like, whoa, you know, I can choose to wear this mask. We're not doing it here. I wore it in, or we don't have to. We can go to the store, or we can choose not to. I mean, some of these folks, the choices are so limited, medically fragile. But I get the ones that want to work. They're ready to go. There are some that, which is awesome, but phew, it's hard. In a world where there really aren't that many choices to be made, it's hard.
Thank you for that clarification, bud.
All right, looking down to my left, Commissioner Beard.
Oh.
I know, we're still on the...
Still on Commissioner Reports here.
Commissioner Reports.
Okay, on the 7th, I participated mostly via Zoom or... I think I've got six different go-to-meeting type of apps on my iPad now. And so anyhow, I participated with, on the Transportation Committee. Now, this is scary. I'm pretty sure I participated in the scale thing on the 8th, but I can't remember. But I'm sure Commissioner Ulrich is about to remind me whether I was there or not.
Let me just say, make sure you know what your camera's pointing at. That's all I'll say.
There is that, too. On the 12th, the CAP Agency Board Meeting, the WebEx or something. On the 13th, the MICA Board Meeting, where we talked about the looming conclusion of the legislative session. On the 15th, the AMC Board Meeting. I will say that these board meetings tend to be a little more succinct and a little shorter when you're doing it on the internet than when you're doing it in person because we really do lose the personal interconnection there, which is so important. Let's see, the 18th, I did have a phone conversation with the Vice Chair from the SMSC. Cole reached out to me, and I want him to know, and I want to publicly acknowledge how much I appreciate it, and reaching out to tell us that the casino is going to partially open on the 26th. Of course, my first question was, when is the restaurant going to open? Apparently, that's not part of the grand rerollout. It's going to wait until June sometime, so. Still biding my time, waiting for a restaurant so I can take people to lunch or something. Let's see, and then of course, in between there, there were a lot of phone calls and paying attention to what's happening to some of our stuff of interest in St. Paul. Of course, there were a couple of bonding bills that didn't happen yet. Just a brief update on those. It looks like there was a commitment from the governor to the Senate Majority Leader that he was going to call them back, even if he didn't extend the, the emergency order on the 12th of June. Let's see, the way the law is written is if he extends the emergency declaration for another 30 days, the legislature is automatically called back in special session where they believe they are going to take up things like the bonding bill and who spends the $2.2 billion. And there were two other major pieces of legislation, the state employee contract ratification and something else that escapes me at the moment. But nonetheless, that's, that's the plan. But here's the downside. If he does not extend the declaration, it's up to him to call the legislature back. And so I think the legislature kind of is taking it on an article of faith that they will get another crack at the bonding bill, and it will probably happen that week that has, that starts with June 12th. And Chairman, I guess that's my report. When we're talking about the legislature, I could prattle on all morning, but I won't.
No, it's a good summary. Appreciate that. Look down to the phone and my computer to Commissioner Ulrich.
Yes, I made it that I attended a greater MSP Board Directors Meeting. There's something that I would like us to take some leadership on. There's a leadership void on an issue, I think, and I want some help from the county attorney on this. It's in a process where major companies looking in our region and looking to develop, one of the first things they ask units of government to sign is a non-disclosure agreement. And this is important. If a community doesn't sign it, then they say, "Thank you very much. We're not going to look in your community anymore." And so what I'd like to find out is what are the best practices? What are we, what are we bound by? When we talk about transparency in government versus signing a non-disclosure agreement, where, where do we go with that? How do we, how do we navigate that? And I think some communities are signing them, some are not. And I think one time in our community, we were told by our development folks, "Hey, there's a major developer looking at Scott County. We can't tell you who it was or who it is." And I think that's how they probably continued that non-disclosure is they just didn't tell us, you know, so that we didn't have to act on a non-disclosure agreement. But I'd like us to figure out what are best practices in the region? Is there legislative fix that's needed to help us with this or not? So that's a key issue. I think we have to maybe take some leadership that is avoided in the region. I don't think anybody's taking that on in a meaningful way. On the 5th, on the 6th, the Parks Commission. On the 7th, the Transportation Committee. On the Transportation Committee, we had a meeting with Mike Barnes via Zoom, and we talked about 13 and 8, how we need a project there and how critical that is. And I think we've decided to submit that as an application for... And don't ask me what these initial stamp for. Maybe Leslie can fill in the gap here. LPP grant, I think we're seeking a grant for 13 and 8. And we also tried to push, put some pressure on them, I think, for 13 and Dakota. They're lagging behind on that project. We've got federal money. And if it isn't started, we'll lose, we'll lose some of that money. So that's a very important issue. Scale, it's been reported on. One thing I was pretty impressed with, I think we had up to 75 people on that meeting via Zoom. So in some cases, some of these meetings are actually better attended by Zoom or call-in because people know... Cause people know, uh, it's just the time of the meeting. It's not the time of getting there, getting back. You know, actually I've said to greater must be, we have all these meetings, let's make, even when we get back to normal, let's make some of them call in. Cause if we gotta drive into rush hour traffic in Minneapolis or St. Paul and for an hour and a half meeting, by the time it's all said and done, it's a half a day that's been used up and we probably meet a little more frequently, which you would like. If we maybe did half of our meetings, uh, call in with Zoom. And I don't think we lose a lot. Especially if they're going to add some more meetings as a result of making it easier. So that, I think that is a key thing. On the eleventh, the Suburban Transit Association Board and the twelfth of FISH Programming Committee, we, the whole board attended. Uh, that's kind of rare. And we, we went through, uh, planning for the year. And on the eleventh, I, I was assigned to approach Leslie from a million. I just sent her a text about fifteen minutes ago about this. Uh, but on the eleventh, we're hoping to have a state of the county, uh, presentation to FISH with the perspective of how can the FISH partners, in particular the faith community, how can they meet these that the county can? What's falling through the cracks? Where does the county really need help? So we don't want a traditional, as opposed to just the state of the county, but focused on how can, how can we help? How can FISH do more? How can the faith community do more? I mean, things jump out. I mean, like we're looking for, always looking for more foster parents and, and a couple of needs came recently where we, uh, we created a, a FISH, uh, post or request for help with, uh, money for housing a homeless person for a night. We want to build up a fund for that through the community, you know, so that the county doesn't have to pay for that. But the generosity of the community can respond to homelessness in our county. That's another example. Uh, we also learned that, uh, they didn't have masks to give to vulnerable people that get on the dial, right? Buses, so FISH is making, having partners make masks so if somebody gets on it, they don't have a mask, the driver can hand them. And this is important because the people that are generally taking dial, right, are amongst the most vulnerable there are. Which triggers me to say one more thing. This is on a personal note. You might ask, well, why, why am I calling in to these meetings? Why aren't I attending? You know, I, I feel a need to be more cautious maybe than the average person. Because my wife, wife works in long-term care. She's in the ground zero, you know, where, uh, in, in the long-term care area, I mean, there's one facility and I think it's right and it's had fifty people die. You know, I get a story from my wife and she says, one day a facility had no cases of the virus. The next day they had sixteen in one day that they discovered. They, they was, one that was brought it forward and they tested everybody and certainly had sixteen cases. So I have to limit my, um, self a little bit and to protect my wife. And then also my wife and her environment is probably makes me more of a risk. So I, I'm out of abundance of caution just because of our relationship with my wife and, and her work in long-term care. She's a director of nursing in a long-term care facility, uh, in Scott County. Fortunately, they don't have any cases. And, uh, but it is a little bit stressful, I, um, because somebody is tested in their facility, staff or resident nearly every day. So they're always waiting, will they be positive or not? So far they've all been negative, which is very bad. But that's why I call in these meetings. Thank you. That's it in my report.
Thank you. That's a good word. And I know you did say it, but that, that, uh, facility is in Scott County. So it's, um, triple, quadruple edge sword. So thank you for that good word. Uh, looking to the left, Commissioner Wolf.
Thank you, Mr. Chair. On the.
Yeah, somebody's got a mic on here. He's feeding back. I think mine is still off.
There we go.
Okay. On the fifth of May, New Market Township had their monthly meeting. On the sixth, Belle Plaine Annexation, had a little piece of, uh, property they, um, had a, uh, concern with. On the eighth, the scale meeting, and I thought it actually went, uh, pretty good there. On the eleventh, um, Planning and Zoning met. They had a couple of, uh, little developments coming, uh, here, out in, uh, Credit River. On the thirteenth, the Metropolitan Emergency Services Board met. On the fourteenth, the I thirty-five Solutions, um, we had, uh, Margaret Anderson Kelleher from MinDOT on and, uh, telling about what she thought was going on, you know, right now with, money's going to be a big concern with, uh, what's going on with budgets. Uh, Elko New Market met later that night. And, uh, after that, uh, Spring Lake Township had their meeting. On the fifteenth, uh, met, uh, with the administrator. Uh, also jumped on the AMC meeting that, uh, Commissioner Beard talked about. They're doing a little bit of cutting on their budget too over there, um, money issues. And then, um, a lot of, uh, time spent on Monday or on Friday and Monday with planning and zoning on a couple of things, uh, um, out in, uh, Spring Lake Township and, um, you know, there's a, um, this on later, but, uh, on, uh, on Spring Lake Township, there's a, uh, uh, person who bought some property and wants to be a, you know, have it to be a motorcycling area in, in a neighborhood. And that's, the neighbors aren't happy about that. So as you can probably imagine. Anyhow, uh, on the eighteenth, the watershed, uh, management met. Prior Lake City met, uh, last night also. Uh, they had, uh, one big thing there was, uh, Warren Erickson, who was on the council, uh, just got elected and they're going to leave that seat, go, uh, uh, unfilled until this November. By the time they, uh, fill it up, uh, get the word out and all the applications, it could be July or August. And, uh, uh, Mr. Erickson, I guess, has been spending a lot of time in Texas. So it was kind of a stretch for him to get back and forth and all that stuff. And, um, then again, uh, last night, uh, the Spring Lake Township, I was out there with, uh, the Town Board Chair, Ted Kowalski. Um, just, you know, kind of looking at the, this motorcycle track from, uh, you know, the neighbor's yard and, um, yeah, it's, uh, that's going to be a tough situation. So that is my report. Thank you, Mr. Chair.
Thank you very much. On the sixth, I had, uh, White House conference call, uh, as was mentioned. I think there was another one in there someplace. I don't have that date on here. But I'll tell you, I, I've been really appreciative of, whatever you think of the administration, they've been really good about bringing in the local, uh, level like us. Um, just keeping us up, up to speed across the country. And I really appreciated that kind of communication. Uh, on the seventh, had a kind of an impromptu meeting with some folks from the Prior Lake City Council and others were invited. And we just sat around a, I, I call it a heat source, fire pit, but we had our social distance marked out. It was, we were all safe and sound. It was a good time of just meeting in a different environment that wasn't Zoom and wasn't in a, in a room. Um, on eighth, as was mentioned, the Zoom scale, I did think that one went well. It's, it's interesting when you've got, what was it, seventy, seventy-five people and sometimes you've got questions and that big of a group. Um, keeping it interactive, I, I think it went well and will only improve as we want to ask questions. Uh, the twelfth, FISH, thirteenth, MESB, which is one of those meetings I too thought was, um, really good over Zoom or WebEx or whatever we dialed into. Got the business done and we're on our way. Uh, on the eighteenth, Prior Lake City Council, Mr. Commissioner Wolf mentioned the sticking with four. They also did a yellow ribbon. The local yell, Yellow Ribbon Group had, um, I think they probably had about eight kids, young adults now, uh, on Zoom and probably another eight that, uh, didn't make it in, just two that were going in the military, different forces, different, uh, branches. Um, they had, um, uh, Chief Sawyer was in there, uh, kind of doing the emceeing and via Zoom. Although the Prior Lake City Council did meet in person for the first time in a few weeks. So social distance, fifty-five gallon bottle of sanitizer, um, the whole, the whole spiel. But it was kind of fun to see here, these young adults embarking on the next chapter and kind of being sent off by folks from Savage and folks from Prior Lake and the Yellow Ribbon Group. Um, and I too, uh, as Commissioner Beard mentioned, received a call from SMSC just to, from the Vice Chair, just to give us, give me an update on what was happening, um, out with the casino. And I, I said the same thing. I said, I really appreciate the communication. I mean, the more we communicate, I don't care what jurisdiction it is, the better off life will be. And so I, I voiced that to him, uh, over the phone. With that, that will conclude my report. Scattered in there, all kinds of different meetings as we're all having and phone calls that we tend to forget about. But looking to my sort of left, our county administrator is ready to give us an update.
Yeah, Mr. Chairman, Commissioners, um, just a quick update on the opening of some of the businesses that had been shut down up until yesterday. Um, the driver's license, DMV opened yesterday morning by appointment. It's sixteen hundred phone calls from Friday over the weekend for folks learn, um, calling for getting an appointment, asking some questions on what they can do in person, what they can still use the Dropbox for. Um, according to Julie and Cindy, it went fairly well yesterday. Everybody was pretty cordial. In fact, folks appreciated being able to come for an appointment, get in and get out versus waiting in lines. Couple of comments there.
Mr. Chair, Leslie, sixteen hundred phone calls. How do we return that many phone calls? Do we just start at the top and keep going?
Yeah, they had, what did Cindy tell me? They still had four hundred. They didn't get through yesterday. But they had several staff and land records and customer service working on returning those calls yesterday to the best that they could and trying to get appointments set up or just answer questions. So they still had a few to get through, um, today. Um, Household Hazardous Waste will open tomorrow by appointment. Their, um, system to set up appointments. And it's been advertised, we've moved the gate to try to keep traffic from backing up a little bit. Um, they are already full into June.
Oh, wow.
And they are actually looking at extending their hours that they offer, um, waste pickup, um, and how they operate that. And that's what they're trying to evaluate right now before they post more appointments. We anticipate, um, learning from the driver's licenses this week and passports would open Monday. Um, if we have the staffing to do it, if you remember, it's Cindy's area that's been helping in the jail as well. And so we have to balance that staffing as the jail is an essential service as well. And then, um, Jake had a new software come in over the, um, past week that his staff can actually help people on their computers now. They had to learn this though, so it delayed our opening a week. They're going to open the twenty-sixth also to their computers by appointments. But they'll be able to remote in from a computer at the desk to help folks if they need assistance on the computers and they're social distancing those and moving them around so that we can help people, um, get back onto that system. So we're opening. Um, other things are going on as well. You know, if you see County Highway forty-two, it's ripped open and storm sewer and things are going in. I thought, uh, I read an update that they were maybe even paving on thirteen and twenty-one, some of the roundabout out there. So things are moving forward and, and work is getting done here.
Yes.
Leslie, with hearing about all that demand for customer service and household hazardous waste, is there, I, I know we're starting with maybe thirty-minute appointments for drop-off or driver's license, whatever. Are we assuming that after a few days of seeing how that goes, there's a possibility that we might be able to get more appointments in there? Seeing how long the average appointment takes? And remind me, how long for household hazardous waste do they have those appointments? I know it's thirty minutes for, um, customer service.
So they both started at thirty minutes till they could see how they went. And if you remember, libraries started at that and, and crunched it down and actually added some more appointments over time. Yeah, that's Julie and Cindy's plan to see how long each one of these takes. Because if they're talking to them on the phone, hopefully they know what they have to bring, they're come, they're pre-registered. So some of them have been taking like in that twelve to fifteen minute range. We're asking people to get here about fifteen minutes early. And there were still some that come and don't have the right information and it takes between twenty and twenty-five minutes. But the goal is to open it up and then also potentially to look at some extended hours since we only have three or so at a counter. Do we need to maybe extend out the hours that we're open with balancing overtime and those types of things because of the revenue issue? Yeah, so they are looking at that.
Good, thank you.
Um, the other one that Cindy and the group are looking, we're looking hard at is elections. And we're doing everything we can right now to ask people to register early so they're not registering at the voting area. We're asking those vulnerable folks to request absentee ballots when they come up. And so far Cindy has heard from several of the townships, they're concerned about judges. Um, so we might have to have some of our staff go into training even for judges for a day here because they tend to be elderly and at-risk folks.
Right.
And so as we're looking at this election, we're looking at staffing and how do we meet some of those demands? You're going to see probably a lot of face, of social media or out on Facebook and on our website, asking folks to register. And if they're at that, at-risk folks, please do absentee and we can try to move people through there and make sure everybody can vote that should. Um, the other one is, um, Commissioner Beard mentioned the, um, legislative session. We were emailing and working with our delegation over the weekend on two bonding. Um, you know, the House and the, um, Senate both had some pretty important things to Scott County. It's where our local bridges come from. It's where our parks capital money comes from. Both of them had the thirteen and the Dakota project, um, which are important to Scott County and Burnsville and actually the whole region for moving traffic through that ports area. Um, and so obviously, as, as, as Commissioner mentioned, that didn't move. Um, the other one was the CARES Act funding. And so the two counties, if you remember when the feds passed that CARES Act to support some government support, um, the two counties that got direct funding because of their population size were Hennepin and Ramsey. The other eighty-five counties in the state of Minnesota did not. Both the Senate and the House had bills that were talking about a per capita, um, type appropriation to the counties. You know, we can document somewhere under the CARES Act between thirteen and fifteen million dollars probably of costs that would be attributed to that, um, process. And so we are hoping that, like the Commissioner mentioned, that there would be a session on that June eleventh, June twelfth as the, um, Peacetime Act ends, that would bring them back in to discuss both of those. And we'll continue to talk to our delegation as well as the extension of some of those DH, DHS waivers. If the legislature would approve, because out of all of this chaos, there have been some things that we found we can do better. You've mentioned some of these meetings where there's long travel. Um, there were some DHS waivers that improved and allowed us to speed up some processes, eliminated face-to-face meetings, allowed for other types of ways of doing business. Um, the sheriff would talk about that some of, having to drive somebody from here to Beltrami County for a hearing or something or a civil commitment, you know, Ron can talk to it better, but they're here for fifteen minutes and we drive hours. And there's ways to do things better that the courts and the state could actually put into play. And so hopefully, um, if they do come back into a session, I know Pam is working with AMC and MICA on the extension of some of those waivers as well. Um, I think, except then for, um, Monday is Memorial Day. It's hard to believe. I don't know where the last two months live. But it's Memorial Day, Monday. So the, um, county buildings are closed on Monday in honor of that. With that.
I've got a couple of questions.
Go ahead.
Uh, I just, on that ports project, do we have a feeling one way or the other? Cause that to me is a, that's a statewide, certainly Southern Minnesota, um, central and Southern Minnesota, that, that's important. Like, does the weight fall in the right places in St. Paul on that? It happens to be in Scott County, but golly, that's.
It is one of the few transportation projects that was in both bills, except something like the Kellogg Bridge was identified in both. So I think that does show the relevance. That project has some federal funding, all right, some freight funding. It has some state of Minnesota funding and then our sales tax was the match. Um, this would help with some of those local costs that the city of Savage would have. Remember, we don't have a county road in the fight on this. This is a city and state highway that we're helping because of scale and the importance of that thirteen corridor, um, to move along and applied for the funding. So yes, I think that it shows up in both of those bills, does emphasize the importance of this at the state level.
And Mr. Chair, I think that, um, yeah, if, and it looks like probably a ninety percent probability, they'll be back sometime in mid-June. Um, because it was in both bills, uh, and both bills had a majority of the votes, but not enough to meet the indebtedness requirement of supermajority. Uh, I would be stunned if it wasn't in the newly constituted bonding bill. I think it was five point three million.
It was, I think, five, five point three in the Senate, maybe like three point five in the House.
Oh, they transposed the number then. Well, we'll help them transpose.
Well, that's the other question is, there's a ask, but.
But there, anyhow, it was in both bills, which tells me that there's a very strong probability it'll be in the, the reconstituted bill that comes back for passage in June, so.
Just got to push for the higher number because I think it stands to point out again that this project is not a county road. But boy, to the region, to the county, that's a big deal you walk, drive through there.
And in the, it, you reminded me that in the transportation, uh, Zoom meeting that we had, uh, the Commissioner Ulrich and I were on with Mr. Barnes, uh, we, we made that point. Uh, Commissioner Ulrich really pushed it because it's in his district. But, um, and I think, uh, the metro, uh, engineer heard that and, and kind of, he couldn't say, yes, you're right, we're going to go find more money. He can't do that. But he can acknowledge that, yeah, this is actually a regional issue and thank you, Scott County, for stepping up and getting the ball rolling on it, so.
That's a, I think that's something to stand on for sure. Um, the other question was on the times for the HHW, the hazardous waste. It, it's half hour. Are we, you know, I'm just hope, hoping we can jam in a couple more meetings. Are we saying, uh, hey, I signed up for the nine on June first, be there at nine? Are we saying, hey, I signed up for the nine on June first, be there at nine? It's not a window of nine to nine-thirty, show up at nine-seventeen?
Correct, we're asking them to be there at the start time. I actually, I don't know what the, I think they actually asked them to be a few minutes early as well. I'd have to check that, but I know on the driver's license, they're asking them to be there about fifteen minutes early, so that we can figure out if we can move people through quicker.
Yeah, because that'd be, I know that people have got to be disclamored for that. And then the last point was the waivers, like, do we feel like that's being sticky to, like, maybe some of these will be extended? And potentially, I know it's a little early, but could be, not just a waiver, but long-term?
Yeah, I believe that that's what the ask is, could they become a permanent? And the ones that DHS and the state have control over, some of the federal, and I know Pam is working on that, and Hennepin County has taken some lead, but I think there are a lot of counties supporting some of the efficiencies that they found.
I'll just make a comment to that, because Pam and I did talk about that this morning, and I've talked on several of my, with AMC committees and NACO committees even. Some make perfect sense, everybody'd be like, yeah, we should keep that waiver in place. Some are like, no, this is really hurting the clients. But then there's a lot in the middle, and so Pam and her staff are really looking at things on a case-by-case basis to see where we stand. Because the counties, even throughout Minnesota, are very different, something in Hennepin may be very different here. A couple of things we're talking about today is, sure, there's some waivers that make things a little bit more efficient and faster, but because of some of our maybe board philosophies on fraud detection or things like that, maybe we're not so big on that waiver. So I think it's really important not to just say, all waivers are great, we need to keep them all, but we need to really think about how that impacts things. And so staff's starting to really look at that. Hennepin County's done some great work, giving us, giving other counties something to look at. But really important for when you're working or communicating with MICA or AMC, that we need some county, different types of county input on that, because I think there's going to be some real differences with our colleagues across the state.
It's a good word, for sure, for sure. All right, anything else for Leslie at this point? Otherwise, I'm going to look down to my right, is there any need to recess for one of those attorney-client meetings?
Mr. Chair, we do not.
Awesome, thank you very much. Well, after this meeting, we are going to meet as a county board in a workshop setting to review executed new building contracts. And Leslie also mentioned that it's Memorial Weekend, Memorial Day on Monday, how in the world did that happen? But nonetheless, it is, so. I know some of us have had a lot of time on our hands, and maybe we're starting to dabble back into work, but it's a great opportunity. Yes, it's a kickoff to summer, but to remember what that day means and what people did on our behalf. Sometimes I forget that, and I am not forgetting that this time around. So everyone enjoy, but take a few moments to contemplate what Memorial Day means. With that, item eleven, adjournment, we have a motion. Uh-oh.
Second.
We have a real second, any discussion?
We have to do a roll call vote, because I might vote no.
Well, you'll have your opportunity, because Dad was ready to go.
Commissioner Waxman-Brecke.
Aye.
Commissioner Wolf. Commissioner Beard.
Aye, I suppose.
Commissioner Beard.
Aye.
And Commissioner Ulrich.
Aye.
With that, thank you, everybody, we are adjourned.